I'd like to call to order the Westmont Village Board Meeting of March 31st, 2016, at 6:00 PM and ask Clerk Simsky for a roll call, please.
Mayor Gunther.
Here.
The clerks here, Trustee Addington.
Here.
Trustee Barker.
Here.
Trustee Barry.
Here.
Trustee Guzzo.
Here.
Trustee Little.
Here.
Trustee Nero.
Here.
Manager May.
Yes, here.
Attorney, we have the lovely attorney tonight. We have Attorney Perez with us.
I'm here.
And we have our Finance Director, Parker.
Here.
Would everybody please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everybody tonight, and first item on the agenda is our open forum. I know Chief Mulhern went around, and if anybody would like to address the board on any item that's not on the agenda, now's your opportunity. If not, then I will close open forum and move on to reports. First report is my report, and earlier today, we had our 100th anniversary committee meeting. This is our 95th year of being incorporated as a village. Five years from now, in 2021, we will be celebrating 100 years, so we've got a committee together. We're going to meet eventually quarterly until we get closer to the event, so we can celebrate our 100th year. There's a lot of good ideas. Our next meeting will be a month from now, April 28th, 3:30, right here, for anybody who's interested. We'd love to have more ideas, and we're looking to get every community group and organization involved. I know there's a lot of excitement about it, and I know it's five years down the road, but we want to build, so then when we get to the 100th, everybody's ready to celebrate. At this time, I'd ask Larry McIntyre, he's got some information or somebody to introduce.
And actually, my introduction will be very brief, but as you all know, our Westmont Library is incredibly active, and in recent years, the amount of programs that they put on has just grown tremendously, and they're a great asset to the community. And I'd like to invite Alex up to talk about a new video program that they're producing and putting out on YouTube called Westmont Live.
Thank you for the introduction. My name is Alex Carlson. I'm one of the Adult Services Librarians at the Westmont Public Library, and the video series we're putting together, "Live in Westmont," is something we recently just started a couple of months ago, and it's going to be an ongoing thing that we're working on. I'm sure some of you are wondering why the library is putting together a video series, and we're using the series to highlight community organizations and businesses to show their diverse stories to the community. The library, it's no longer really in the business of being just a repository for books and other media. We're much more of a community space these days. We're very involved in our community, and our library space is used frequently by a very diverse group of individuals and organizations. The videos are going to be posted on YouTube and also put out through the library's social media accounts, our Facebook and Twitter especially. In the videos, we're going to be having the local businesses and organizations share a bit of information about themselves, and then really why they operate in Westmont and what they love about the community. We have already shot two videos with Uncle John's Music Shop in downtown Westmont and the Environmental Improvement Commission. We shoot the videos at either the business or at the organization's meeting place, and then we edit them back at the library, and then we share them through the media accounts. And then the organizations also have access to those videos as well, if they want to share them on their own social media platforms. We are very interested in working with local government organizations as well, such as the police station or the fire department. I am taking over the video series as of this week, and I will also be working with Carmen Higgins, who is our outreach coordinator at the library, and so we will be the people to contact if you have any questions, or you can also forward your questions to Julia, and then she can forward them to us. We're looking to do about one video a month, one video for an organization a month, roughly about then, and on Saturday, May 14th, from 2:00 to 4:00 PM, we're recording community stories from individuals who will be able to come in. There'll be like open, no registration kind of required, open space in the library while we record videos and compile them and post them to the library's YouTube account as well. Those videos are going to be for people of Westmont to talk, to share their own stories, why they love the community, or their own histories throughout the community. That is all I have.
Very good. We may be using some of those for our 100th anniversary celebration.
That'll be great.
And I do have to, earlier, we had a Public Information Committee meeting, and we heard a lot about other activities the library is getting involved in, so very much community-minded and oriented, so thank you.
Yep, thank you.
That's all I have. I'll move on to Clerk Simsky, who is with a broken hand. She's taking minutes, so she's trying to hide it.
I am trying to hide it. You're right. We did have a Public Information Committee meeting tonight. All I can tell is, everybody, look on your websites. Look at the Park District website, look at the Village of Westmont website, look at the library website. There is so much going on that we can't even begin to recap it, so just check daily and see what's going on in the different parts of town, because there's a lot. And then I wanted to also announce again about the annual Westmont Community Awards Banquet, which is Monday, April 25th, at 6:00 PM at the Hilton Hotel. Tickets are available at www.westmontchamber.com. So if you're interested in going, we give away a lot of awards that night, Citizen of the Year, Rotary Gives Away. There are a lot of awards given that night, so come out and join us. It's a fun evening. And then I just want to warn everyone, do not try to walk a treadmill and multitask, because I walked one for 16 years, and I was smart enough never to do that until about three weeks ago, and then I did it trying to, with anger, because I was so angry trying to make sure my Fitbit and my telephone were in sync, and the phone was acting up, and like a dummy, I stopped to throw it across the room, and I fell. So that's what happens in fits of anger, so don't try to multitask.
That's a lesson for today.
Yes, that's the lesson for today.
Well, thank you. We'll move on to Attorney Perez.
I don't have any report. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, Manager May.
Nothing, sir. Thank you.
Okay, then we'll move over to this side of the, and we'll ask Trustee Barker to lead us off.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, I have the honor to introduce two girls from Westmont High School to talk us all about a program that they put together called Patalica, and if they would like to come up to the microphone and share their story.
She's not coming up with you?
No. No. Okay, so I'm Erin Slattery, and I attend Westmont High School as a senior, and luckily, we have a class called Changemakers, which is a class that we're allowed to pick a project that we're passionate about. So Anna Higgins is not with me, but we both really like animals, and we were trying to think of something we wanted to do. We weren't sure if it would be something towards like getting vegan options in our school or doing more towards like farm stuff, but we were lucky to find a local business called the Humane Haven Animal Shelter, which is a no-kill shelter, and it's 100% volunteers, so they don't get like paid to work there. And so we're hosting an event on April 2nd at our high school, Westmont High School, and it's from 1:00 PM to 4:00 PM, and pretty much, we're going to have local bands, so like kids from our school that we know have talent, and we're going to have them sing, and it costs $5 to get in, but all the money that we make for the event goes to the animal shelter, and we're just hoping to raise like awareness about like no-kill shelters and just like supporting animals and like animal abuse. And luckily, we had Dr. Bersak, who works at the junior high. She was a really big help getting us like the sponsorships, and we got sponsorships from local businesses, giving us raffle prizes and money donations, and like really excited, and we just wanted to introduce that to the community, so thank you.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, and I wanted to just congratulate the high school on that Changemakers program. We've had a number of them come here and talk about what they're doing to benefit the community. It's a wonderful program, so congratulations and good luck. Also this evening, I wanted to spread the word about a storm drain stenciling program that was brought to Westmont First. That event is going to be on May 7th, and at this time, we're accepting volunteer sign-ups through the village website, and there's additional information there, but right now, we need, we're hoping to get, let's say, 100 volunteers to cover the community and stencil the storm drains, so that people don't drag or dispose of toxic items in those drains. And we're also partnering with the AIC to help us with that as well, and try to grow a large group of volunteers for that. And then finally, Westmont First is working on this idea with the help of Trustee Little, Subcommittee of Westmont First, and it's called Each One, Reach One, and it's a challenge that I gave the group, and they're expanding on this and going to all the organizations in Westmont to have each person that volunteers time for Westmont to recruit one more person this coming year, and double, you know, double our volunteer efforts in the community. Or the other side, the flip side of it is, you can cut your workload in half if you bring in an additional person, but you know, we have such a strong community with great volunteers, and to go out and recruit somebody to bring somebody into that, and you know, have the reward of being a volunteer in Westmont, as well as, you know, growing that group and take some of the pressure off folks like Westmont Special Events, and you know, with the street fair exploding and Taste of Westmont being so huge, it's certainly a group that could use additional people. So watch for that as well, and you know, if you want to take that step to volunteer in the community, there's a number of organizations that would welcome you. So that is all.
Well, thank you. That's a great idea. Trustee Little and Barker, look forward to doubling our volunteers. Trustee Guzzo.
Thank you, Mayor. It is that time of year again. We have a budget meeting a week from tonight. It's Thursday, April 7th, here at Village Hall at 6:00 PM. All are welcome to attend, and our next Finance Committee meeting is going to be a week later, Thursday, April 14th, at 4:00 PM, so everyone is invited for that also, and thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Trustee Nero.
Thank you, sir. Just a couple things. First off, our next Public Safety Committee meeting will be April 14th, and then next, I'd like to call up Chief Mulhern to talk about a couple items. Drug, our drug take-back program, and of course, the cop-on-top program. Once Chief gets up here.
All right. Sir?
All right.
Thank you, Trustee Nero. Just, I'll be very quick, two items. On Saturday, April 30th, beginning at 10:00 in the morning at the Westmont Police Station, 500 North Cass, we're partnering with the DEA Drug Enforcement Administration. We do this twice a year annually, where people can come and turn in unused and unwanted medication, whether it be a family member's medication or you just had the stuff. Please bring it in. We dispose of it. We have about four bins set up in the lobby. You can come drop your stuff off. There's no charge, and you can drop off as much as you want. This makes it easier rather than flushing it down the toilet and possibly contaminating water supplies and/or leaving in the house where someone who shouldn't get the prescription gets to it. This is a good way of disposing the drugs, and we also will take needles with a partnership we have with Waste Management. We have needle and sharps, containers are called as well. So that again, will be on Saturday, April 30th, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM in the lobby of the police station. And the annual cop-on-top event, probably be back to talk about it a couple more times, May 27th, it's a Friday, we'll be back again on top of the roof at Dunkin' Donuts down on 63rd Street, just west of Cass. We'll be there from 6:00 AM until noon, and we're trying to see if we can expand into another Dunkin' Donuts in town, but that hasn't been confirmed yet, so right now, we're still set. We're good to go for April, I'm sorry, May 27th, last Friday in May, at Dunkin' Donuts, 63rd and Cass. So please come visit us. All the money goes towards Special Olympics, not towards the police department, not towards anything else. All money goes towards to the Special Olympians, so thank you.
Thank you, sir. One, a couple more items. Public CPR training, May 24th at 6:30 PM and October 25th at 6:30 PM. You can sign up, sign up online, please. If you haven't done it, do it. It's a great program. It's a great service we offer. And then lastly, I just want to let everybody know, last week, I had the privilege professionally, I serve on Central State's Water Environment Government Affairs Committee. We had our conference down in Springfield, and one of the presentations was from the EPA on Section 319 Grants, and I learned something that they're doing differently. Top priority grants are going to be awarded for environmentally green infrastructure projects. So how it'll be focused is the conventional costs will have to be paid for conventionally, but any additional costs, these grant monies will be available. It's something new that they're doing. They're top priority for the projects, if I explain that right. The additional cost to do maybe permeable pavers over conventional blacktop can be, we can get them from grants, so it's.
From the state?
From the state, EPA. Yep, it's called Section 319. The monies are there. I asked her, she told me there's millions of dollars waiting. She also is putting together a nice little program on how to do it, how to apply for things.
They can distribute them without a budget?
They can distribute them, yes. She said there's nothing holding them back. This year, the projects need to be, the applications need to be turned in by August 1st, so we still have some time to maybe do something this year or next year, but I'll get some, a lot of information on how to apply, what to do, and how to do it, so it's kind of exciting. Hopefully, it works out.
Thank you.
That's all I have, sir. Thank you.
I'll move over here to Trustee Addington.
Couple of things, Mayor. Thank you. First one is that, again, I'll remind everyone, the Alliance Club will be bringing in the hearing bus for hearing screenings and the diabetic retinopathy bus for eye screenings on April 14th. The buses will be located in the parking lot at Maze Lake Senior Center. We're going to do it in connection with the Maze Lake Senior Health Fair, and the buses will be here from 9:00 until 12:00. Everyone is more than welcome to come and attend, and this is Alliance Project. There is no charge for this, so if you can come. The other thing is that next Wednesday, the 6th of April, we're going to have the first meeting of the Strategic Plan Implementation Committee. We're going to meet after the Economic Development Meeting that morning. Again, if any of the trustees would like to send me their thoughts on those items within the strategic plan that they think ought to take top priority, I will share that with the committee or any of you that can come that morning. You're more than welcome to be there, and anybody from the audience who would like to be there and watch us as we do this implementation plan now of what we approved here a couple of months ago. So again, 10:30 at, on the 6th here, we'll be in the boardroom, the executive room behind us, and that brings us to Economic Development. They will be meeting before that at 9:00 in the morning, and we do have a couple of items on the agenda. We have one new business that wants to come in, so again, and again, anyone who wants to come in here. We'll also update projects that have been priorly approved and where the status is in a lot of this stuff, so again, everyone is welcome to that. It's exciting, because there is a lot on the table. A lot of people are talking about property inside town here, and as we go forward now getting into the, into the summer months, there seems to be a lot of movement and a lot of positive movement. There's a business after hours at 5:00 on April 20th. That's going to be at Theracor, which is at 350 East Ogden. Those are always fun, so if you want to come to that, please contact the Chamber of Commerce so they can, they can put you down as attending. And then I want to introduce Larry Forsberg from the Chamber for just a couple of minutes to talk about the restaurant voting that took place here over the last several weeks.
Let me give you a quick preliminary preview. We will be announcing the results on April 25th at the Community Awards Dinner. During the month of March, actually ending last Sunday, in partnership with Shaw Media, the Westmont Chamber had a vote for people to vote for their favorite restaurant, pizza, place to have a cup of coffee, fine dining, a list of 17 different categories. We received 6,391 votes for their favorite places to dine in Westmont, which is a great way of showing how people love the 95 restaurants we have here in town. So we will be announcing the winners on April 25th, so stay tuned. Thank you.
And then the last thing I have is just, you got the update at the end of last week in the, in the, this week in Westmont report, but I just have to mention that we looked at about 65 bills at the DuPage Mayors and Managers Legislative Committee meeting for recommendations on either support or not support, or to monitor, whatever, and we had looked at about another, over the two months prior to that, another 25 or so that affect municipalities. So some were between 85 and 100 bills that affect us. I asked Jay, who's our legislative liaison down in Springfield, how many of those bills will actually get discussed? He says we'll be lucky to see 10%. It's ridiculous, but it's what we're living with, so our next meeting will of course be the, we meet on the 4th, Tuesday, again in April, so the next saga will come out at that point in time, and that's all I have, sir.
Very good, and again, I thank you for representing the village at those meetings. Trustee Little.
Thank you, Mayor. Our next Administration Committee meeting will be May 12th at 4:00, 4:30 in this room, so everybody's invited to come out for that one. And then I don't know if anybody knows, but the electronic bulletin boards are now up and running.
They're beautiful.
We have two. We have one at the library, and we have one at the Johannick Fire Station Headquarters on South Cass. So we have one at North Cass and one at South Cass, and we'll be putting up all kinds of information about what's happening in Westmont, so make sure you take advantage of watching those when you drive by or when you're riding with somebody else driving by. Make sure that you catch up on what's going on, so thank you. That's it.
Well, thank you. And I save Trustee Barry for last, because I know he's got some.
We have all kinds of exciting stuff here.
So Trustee Barry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess we'll save the awards first towards the end. So the Public Works Committee is meeting April 28th at 4:30. Not much to report out of them with the snow ending, but a lot of spring cleanup we've seen down by the train station, and a lot of the areas have been getting cleaned up. So in regard to the train station, for the next three weeks, there will be repairs to the platform at the train station. We thank everyone for their patience during this time. You know, we always want to use caution around the train tracks, but please extreme caution while these repairs go on. And again, more exciting news, that the electronics recycling program is going to return. It will be the third Saturday of each month from 8:00 AM to noon. This will be at the Township Highway Department located at 318 East Quincy, and that's really down from Bales Hardware where we meet Clarendon Hills. And there's a couple changes to the program. They will now charge for TVs. The least expensive TV will be $15, and the most expensive will be 60, so you can go online to check out where your TV would fall. But again, that's the third Saturday of each month, 8:00 AM to noon at the Downers Grove Township Highway Department. The village recently received official notification that the village of Westmont has once again been awarded a Tree City USA designation. This is the 20th consecutive year that the village has received this designation, so we'd like to congratulate John Yater and the entire Public Works Department for this great achievement. I also know John's been working very hard on the stenciling program and getting us environmentally friendly paints and everything else that go along with that. So again, thanks to John and his guys. Our weekly brush pickup again is starting with Waste Management. This will resume next week, beginning in April, and there is details. I just happened to see them in Neighbors Magazine. I believe it was in the Suburban Life. I know it's on the Access Channel, so there are specific ways you need to wrap up your shrubbery and brush, so please look for those. And now for the really exciting part. We have a presentation tonight on our Arbor Day Art Contest and Essay winners, and I'm going to ask Mary to come up and hand out our presentations and go through our essay contest winners, please.
As Harold mentioned, this is Westmont's 20th anniversary as being a Tree City, and to mark the occasion, the Westmont Environmental Improvement Commission conducted a contest earlier this month with the theme, "I Love Trees Because," and we invited all the students of Westmont to participate, and we had a number of great entries, and we asked people to take a look outside at the display case, because a number of the entries are there for your review, and we have 11 winners tonight, and everybody who submitted did a great job, and it was hard for us to make our selections or that. And I apologize upfront if I mispronounce your names and everything, but what I'd like to do is, and I pronounce your name if you can come up and get your award, and then if you can hang around a few minutes after to take a group picture. I'd like to call up two of our first grade winners, Keesha and Sumutha Visakas. This one's yours, and this one's yours. Can you? They both wrote essays on the beauty of trees and the colors of leaves and how fruit trees supply food for us. And then their brother was also an award winner with a great essay that focused on Planet Earth's survival and the benefits of trees in our everyday lives. I think this, I think in this family, we're going to have future foresters and environmentalists.
Good.
Our next award winner is Stephanie Walker. Stephanie's in 8th grade at Westmont Junior High, and she painted in oil-on-canvas artwork, and the painting, if you look at it, has, shows the intricate branching patterns in that, and we welcome their first oil painting in the contest. Anisha Matthew is our next winner. Anisha's in 3rd grade at Holy Trinity School, and her artwork shows the beauty of trees, and she showed her love for these trees with some little red hearts in her work. Sumarika Sista is a 4th grade student at Miller School, and hers is the large blue artwork, and each of the leaves in the tree expresses what the benefits of trees are in our community. The next recipient is Claudia Kamelke, and Claudia's in 5th grade at Marker School, and her entry was a combination artwork and essay, and her artwork included "The 10 Benefits Trees Provide Us." Our next winner is Ngruga Sanduwaka, and she wrote an essay reflecting how trees are useful resources and providing us clean oxygen and the positive impact on the environment. We also liked her comment about, "When you're angry, if you look at trees, trees help calm Next winner is Heather Sladenski. Heather is in 7th grade at Holy Trinity, I mean, at Holy Trinity School, and her essay highlighted. And her essay highlighted how trees can absorb up to 100,000 gallons of rainfall each year and the beauty of the fall leaves. We had two entrants, Naomi Langudik and Autumn Schmerk, who weren't able to be here tonight, but we also want to thank them for their contributions in that. And we also like to thank the parents and teachers for their efforts in supporting future environmentalists and helping us protect the planet.
Would you like to do a group picture of all the award winners and families? Come up in the air.
No, you're coming.
So we'll have the first row right here.
Congratulations.
Backward again and step forward a little bit.
What a crew. Are ya? Congratulations.
This is so funny.
All right. I'm going to have a little, take a step forward if you want. There you go.
You do those names.
I know. I couldn't do it.
All right. Go do a few. Thank you.
And then, Mr. Mayor, I just have one last thing that the Environmental Committee will be doing is they have a seedling giveaway program. Residents can go to the village website to sign up for free seedlings, which will be available for pickup on Earth Day, which is April 22nd, which again is also the Rotary Club's reverse raffle. That is all I have.
Thank you. And again, congratulations to all the award winners. And I also want to thank the Environmental Commission for all the work they do in helping us promote our environment. Moving on then to Agenda Item Number Six. We need a public hearing for Sycamore Run subdivision special service area. Board to conduct a public hearing on the establishment of a special service area for certain properties within the Sycamore Run subdivision related to the St. Joseph's Creek Bank stabilization project. And I'd ask Attorney Perez to give some additional information.
I just want everybody to know that notice of this public hearing was published in the local newspaper at least 15 days before this public hearing. And notice was sent to each of the affected property owners at least 10 days before the public hearing, and that was mailed to them. And this was all in accordance with state statute. Additionally, the ordinance proposing this SSA and the public notice identified nine initial properties that would be subject to this SSA. However, it was subsequently determined that only eight property owners actually consented and signed agreements for the SSA and accepted property adjacent to the St. Joseph's Creek. Accordingly, at this time, there's only eight properties that would be included if this SSA is approved. The ninth property, which is 305 Elwood Court, owned by Mr. and Mrs. Pharoah, would not be included. And I think Manager May does have more information on this project.
I thought it'd be useful to describe what the project is. You're all familiar with it and anybody who, you know, lives at the location is familiar with the project. But just to describe what was going on, the St. Joseph's Creek, or the St. Joseph's Creek at this point runs between 63rd Street and 61st Street behind the single-family homes that are in Sycamore Run, between that and the apartment complex that we know as Eagle Creek, has been called due west, has had different names throughout this process. And the creek alignment through there was in a very oddly shaped parcel, was a very long finger that connected to the detention basin, if you recognize the wetland area at the corner of Cunner and 60 First Street. All of that was connected in one piece all the way back there. And there were serious, significant issues happening with the creek erosion that was pulling material out of the adjacent properties and in one case, exposing the foundation of one of the homes. Now, being that the, I'm trying to describe the history of what even led to the project in the first place. So at that point, there was no way for any one single homeowner who abutted any of this to do, other than driving sheet piling in their own yard, there's no way to address the issue. So together with the owners of the apartment complex, the nine homes that were mentioned that front on the property kind of jointly went into the construction project, the restoration or the armoring of the creek bed. And that project initiated, the issue is a very long time, like pre-2000. But by the time that it was agreed that cooperatively go into this project, there were the nine property owners, the village of Westmont, and then what was the business entity that owned the apartment buildings. They all participated. We've got agreements between each other. Essentially, the village would administer this project and do it, and the costs would be distributed amongst the property owners. And that's how it was set up back in 2008 when the agreements were done. And that's still effective, but what's, you know, a lot of time has passed since then, eight years, and a lot of things have changed, including the costs. Early on, the apartment complex, because that detention basin I mentioned was kind of half in this parcel and half out, they had an upfront contribution where they paid in to the village, and then the village became the owner of that parcel in Lot 117. And not only the constructive projects, but the, all the property adjacent to single-family homes were, would have, that portion of what we call Lot 117 was all carved out and they each, all their properties were extended and they retained ownership of that piece that actually contained the, not just the creek, but at least the creek bank on their side. It's different depending on the location. So that's where the agreements with each of the nine property owners came in. And the SSA, when set up at that time, was to offset the cost. So the cost of the participation in the apartment complex, there was also in that lot that I call the detention basin or the wetland area, we carved out a dry parcel in there. We are to sell, we've already subdivided it, we are to sell it and raise revenue for that. All of that was to offset the cost of construction, which are constructive estimates, you know, somewhere, you know, that are now more than 10 years old. And the balance of what was left was to be repaid through this special service area that we're talking about tonight or what the public hearing is about. The special service area was set up to not exceed $10,000 per these nine parcels. Backing up, we did say that there was one person that did not participate in 2008 and the neighbor of the address that we were talking about actually took on that extra piece of the parcel. That by itself is not significant, other than we're dealing with eight entities instead of nine. We agree that that was the intent and how it was set up. And we only have the eight executed agreements for the rest of the project. Also, the maximum amount was said to be not to exceed $10,000 per parcel. The, after going through the construction and there were clearly, each parcel had a different application done to it or had a different amount of work that was attended to, or were impacted in different ways. Some with the fence, some with the removal of vegetation, some with just different aspects. The materials that, you know, were washed out of the yard and how to restore that. And none of that, it was decided, you know, you've been at the other public meetings that we've had, were not made part of the project because they were all individual, unique applications. So all of that is to say, instead of the $10,000 amount, it was decided by you all previously that we will implement this SSA at a maximum of $5,000 per parcel. It is set up to be $5,000 per the eight parcels over a five-year period, so that's $1,000 per year per location. And then, of course, it's on a property tax, so those are paid in the two installments like the rest of the property taxes are too. So that's what, the reason it was $5,000 is that the, not the theory, but in concept is that the other $5,000 that aren't being charged, that any individual homeowner can apply it to their own needs that they have on their property to whatever extent, or just do nothing and just benefit from the $5,000 discount. So whether it's, you know, landscape restoration or a rigid fence, or whatever your own preferences are, that was the purpose of discounting it from $10,000 to $5,000, to put their own needs in their own hands and let them address it the way they want.
I think that's the key because when we held those meetings, their major concern is affecting their backyard, basically.
It was a great change.
And rather than collecting the 10, we felt it's appropriate just to collect five and let them do what they want with their backyard. The other item, Steve, is at first, the idea was that the village wasn't going to contribute, but this ended up costing how much the project?
Yeah, I did briefly mention that. All of these arrangements were set up based on estimates of construction costs that were calculated back in 2005, 2008, when this was all put in. And all of this was supposed to offset all the construction costs and the village itself would be unaffected. It would be that we were just coordinating the work for all the property owners. But changes in permitting, changes in construction costs, changes in DuPage County, well, the permit requirements and the restoration, in fact, we're still paying for, you know, monitoring of the wetland plantings. And we're, just constructive improvements are in excess of $330,000. And then the engineering on top of this, it's somewhere between a 400 and a $450,000 project that this, this will recoup, just, I don't mean just, but it will recoup $40,000. We had that initial investment, I said that was the participation that was done, you know, eight years ago. That was in the amount of $80,000. Wait. Yeah, $80,000. And then the contingent on that was that if the village took ownership of the balance of what's Lot 117. And the parcel I said that we were supposed to carve out, the purpose of that is to recoup some of those costs too, but they're not, I don't mean anything by it, but they're not coming close to covering the construction costs.
Well, that's, I just want to make sure everybody's aware of it, that that lot and the special service districts were supposed to cover the costs. Even if we get 100,000 for that lot, we're looking at 140,000 where the village is contributing the rest. So at this time, I'm going to offer the public hearing for the public. If you want to address the board or anything about this issue, all you need to do is go to the podium, state your name, and now, and if anybody...
If anybody is interested, while they're thinking, you know, the one last point is this is just the public hearing for the formation of the SSA. You've already adopted the ordinance, announcing your intent to do that. This is the public hearing, and even after the public hearing tonight, comment, either written or otherwise, is welcome for 60 days further before an actual ordinance has to be adopted by the board and recorded.
So there will be no vote tonight?
Yeah. Tonight's just a public hearing. The vote will probably be two to three months from now on, one of the agendas, and we'll make sure everybody knows. So is there anybody that'd like to, just come on up to the podium, state your name, and I guess address, if you want the address.
Dan Davis, 305 Beachwood Court. On the reduction from the 10,000 to the 5,000, how was that formulated, brought up?
I think we looked at...
It wasn't formulated, it was just that, it was in the agreements that were executed that was allowed up to $10,000 per, not to exceed $10,000. And we just, it was just an effort to, you know, apply those, there's no calculation in saying that's what it was, but it was agreed by the board to discount it by that amount or half of that to allow that investment to be done custom per parcel.
Now, can I do, when it comes to my own property, can I put up my own embankments and whatnot on my property now? Is that what you're saying?
No. I'm saying the amount of the, the special assessment is a property tax. And instead of being charged $2,000 per year, you're only being charged $1,000 per year. So conceptually, the $5,000 that you're not going to be charged over the five years is an effort to help you invest in your own way, on your own property. Now, there's still the easement requirements. You can't work in the wetland or the flood plain or any of that without a permit process that we could help you with. But we would talk to you about what you wanted to do, but the idea was fences and landscaping and other buffer-type items.
Now, was there going to be any more, more like wetland things being implemented? Like there were supposed to be like 15-foot grasses or 10-foot grasses put in and stuff like that? Was any of that more, could it be taken care of?
I don't know the details answer to that question. I know what, whoever was in the plan was put in there. Some things are plugs and they're going to take some time to establish. When I talked about the monitoring, we have to watch it for three years to make sure that was planted survives and then, you know, follows the plan as well. So we have, we have a permit to work in the waters of the US. It's a regulatory waterway. So DuPage County administers those permits and we have to follow their guidelines. So I don't know the details about the grasses. Norial is not in this week, but if you wanted specifics about, you know, look at the construction plans, they're, you know, they're available here in the village hall if you wanted to do that.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Amy Shalikins from 304 Beachwood Court. So when we started this, we bought the house in 2013. And we started looking into this, and we actually don't own the property that's subject to the Special Assessment District. When we purchased the house, the pins were never actually connected, so it's never been deeded to us. So the actual proper owner has never been notified of this public hearing or that she's subject to a Special Assessment District. Any thoughts on what we're going to do about that?
Well, no. The owner of the property will be assessed on record and we'll give that person opportunity to have their questions to the board the night we address the special assessment.
So she was never provided notice for tonight.
It's two separate parcels. So we call it as one address, but the, you know, that should have been addressed at the closing.
Correct. The pins were never, so it's two different pin numbers. I went to the county assessor's office and looked it up. It's two different pin numbers and the pin numbers were never combined. So when our house was deeded to us, the property that's actually the Lot 117 or whatever it was, was never actually deeded to us. So the proper owner, the notice was just sent to our address. She has no idea what's going on. And I'm, I mean, from a legal standpoint, it obviously needs to be transferred to us because she shouldn't really be owning a property that's not connected to her. I get that, but we never knew that this was coming.
Right. And then, you know, being recorded against the property that should have been discovered at the closing, so it's certainly worth looking into and we'll...
It's not recorded against the property either. So when you look up, actually, if you look up our pin number that was deeded to us, there's nothing about the Special Assessment District. If you actually look up the pin number from the Lot 117, nothing comes up from the county records. The only thing that comes up is if you go to the assessor's office and look up the pin number that's from the Lot 117. And then it just shows you that the tax bill is going to the previous owner. There's nothing in the county, in the county recorder's office.
Yeah. Need to look into that. Thank you.
Okay. I'm actually an attorney myself, so I did the legwork to make sure that that was right. But if you look up the pin number for Lot 117, there's nothing on there. So my concern is, is that the owner of the property has no idea. So the legal notices are not proper to her for this public hearing.
Thank you. You said 304?
304.
All right.
Anyone else? Seeing none, then I'll close the public hearing and I'll hope the trustees have any comments at this point. Seeing none, then we'll move on the agenda.
I guess I'll just repeat again, you know, we're still accepting comments for 60 days if there's...
Yeah. And there'll be other opportunity to address the board and hear their comments the night, or any night you want to come to the village board meeting and during open forum, or the night that it's on the agenda. or the night that it's on the agenda. Steve, you'll make sure they are notified?
If what?
When they, it's on the agenda.
Yes.
Yes. And we'll try to find out that person, too.
Yeah, that's, we qualify that, we'll send a notice to that address.
Again, thank you.
We'll solve the rest of it.
All right, moving on. Items to be removed from the consent agenda. Is there any board member who'd like any of these items to be removed?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like item four, PO 11038487, removed, please.
I will remove that from the consent agenda. Any other items? Seeing none, I'll add...
Which PO?
All right.
On the bottom of the page.
Okay, we'll address that after the consent agenda, separately, once we address the consent agenda, and they'd ask manager May to please read the consent agenda.
Tonight on the consent agenda are village board minutes. Board to consider approving the minutes of the village board meeting held March 17, 2016. Next is finance ordinance number 22, and the amount is $791,044.39. Third item on the consent agenda is February financial report. Board to consider a motion to accept the financial report submitted for the month of February 2016. Now, we have purchase orders. First purchase order being Collision Craft, $11,003.49, is been repaired due damage to squad, squad number 36. That is also, its budget is a repair, but it's also an insurance claim item. Second purchase order, Earth Kaplan Interiors, $9,081.60. This is for the replacement of the carpeting in the police department. Purchase order for doors by Russ, $16,824. Even is the planned replacement of the fire department garage doors, this, like the carpeting in the police department. These are items that we've had on hold the entire budget year, pending any activity from the state of Illinois that may adversely affect us, so we're finishing up this budget now. Next purchase order, well, is the one that was removed, is Magic Pure LLC, and the amount of $5,070. It's not part of the consent agenda. Next purchase order would be Engineering Solutions Team, $17,900 for the, this, I was talking about the soil boring and the environmental investigation at the last board meeting. This is, the soil boring, screen environmental part was the one that was $5,600, and this is for the entire engineering component for that geotechnical subservice investigation. That was, if I didn't say it was $17,900, it's for the Naperville and Warwick stormwater project, phase two, ESA and soil testing analysis. Next purchase order is Cloud Sherpas, $19,200, represents the Google backup. The next purchase order is SHI International Corp., and the amount of $7,231, and this is for Kaperski, which is the antivirus and spamware component, the virtualization of that on our system. Both this purchase order and the last one were marked as other. It's not that they're not budgeted, it's just that they are budgeted, but we're doing things differently, both switching vendors and switching systems so that it's a three-year component now, and I forgot what it was, Spencer, there was a savings by doing it this way over the three years, a significant savings, to do it this way. So we're just switching the method, but it is still budgeted. That brings the total of purchase orders to some number, to $81,240.9. And, oh, you have to add that to...
That was minus that 57.
Yeah, well, it's the total of purchase orders and finance ordinance number 22, is the two numbers I mentioned added together.
Oh, wow.
There are two proclamations on the consent agenda.
Do you want to know the amount?
Please.
872, 284, 48.
Thank you, sir.
Did I do it right? Oh, goodie.
You should make the guy who took the purchase order off do the adding.
You don't want that.
Two more items, both proclamations. First proclamation is for National Volunteer Week. Board to consider a proclamation to declare April 10 through 16, 2016, as National Volunteer Week in the Village of Westmont. And also, National Library Week proclamation. Board to consider a proclamation to declare similarly, April 10 through 16, 2016, as National Library Week in the Village of Westmont. And that concludes the consent agenda as modified.
Do I have a motion to approve as...
Motion to approve, Addington?
Second, Little.
Motion made and second to approve as read. On the question, anybody in the public? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Addington?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Okay, we'll go back to the item that was removed from the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
It's a...
Purchase order...
Yeah.
11038487, Magic Pure LLC, for $5,070.
Motion to approve, Guzzo.
Second, Barry.
Motion made and approved, motion to be made and seconded. On the question.
This purchase order represents water fountain replacements in multiple village buildings. It is the style like you will see out in the hallway with the water fountain replacement, as well as the water bottle fill station component with it.
That's the way to go.
This is for the street division, fire headquarters, as well as the police department.
Any additional questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Addington?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Abstain.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. We'll move on to, we do not have any unfinished business, so we'll move on to new business A. 29 North Cass Avenue, Mora's Mediterranean. Board to consider an ordinance approving a development permit request from Mora's Mediterranean to allow the operation of a restaurant in the B1 limited business district. And community development director Ziegler will give us some more information.
Thank you, Mayor. A new restaurant, Mora's Mediterranean, is taking over the existing Sweet and Savory spot, space. They will be using the same equipment and layout. This is a proposal by the building owner, Dr. Amira Alhussani. A parking variance runs with the property, and this is an allowed use in the B1, where we'd like to see restaurants and high-quality retail to up our sales tax base. I'm available for any questions.
Very good. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Doctor's going to be the owner?
He owns the space, but he's going to be working on it with his, with a partner.
I have a, anybody second it?
Second, Nero.
Motion made and seconded to approve. On the question.
I just have, I just noticed that the, because Trustee Little pointed it out to me, thankfully, the actual title of the ordinance is incorrect, we need to modify that. The wording inside the ordinance is still valid.
Okay.
Just the title needs to be changed.
So...
Indicating that it's a...
The minutes are reflective.
It says 29 and 31, so what is, which is actually the...
It'll be 31.
Be 31.
Yes.
And we have the, I don't say chef, because I understand his wife's the chef, but if you'd like to at least comment a little bit about what you're going to open up?
My name is Ganem Muslmani. I'm here on behalf of Mora Mediterranean Cuisine. Basically, we're planning on taking over the existing Sweet and Savory. We made the arrangement to buy all the equipment from them, and we're not planning on making any major layout changes. We're going to maintain the same layout, probably with some cosmetic changes like paint, exterior signage. We're not requesting a liquor license. We made some arrangement with the health department, we spoke to Mary Jo's, and she gave us some comments about what we need to do to be approved. We already have an appointment with her on the 29th of this month, sorry, April. She's going to tell us exactly what we need to do. We're planning on making an arrangement with the fire department as well to go over that. We're planning on opening in June, and we're taking over the end of April. Maybe we're going to do some, you know, the changes, the arrangement, the preparations, and then maybe in June we'll be ready to open. Dr. Alhussani, he's the owner of the building, and he's the owner of Coco Froyo. Coco Froyo will be the owner of the new restaurant, and it's going to be a partnership with him.
Nice.
So basically, that's it, so if you have any questions.
Well, I think the key is because all of us have learned to love Sweet and Savory, but they're going through a little reorganization right now, and they're working with Larry, I think one of the partners left, so they're working with Larry to try to relocate and keep, keep him in Westmont. So that was, Sweet and Savory decided to do that, and when they did that, I think the opportunity came up for the restaurant to come in. So additional questions?
Could you tell us a little bit about your restaurant history, experience, vast experience, and menu?
Yeah, actually, I used on restaurants before, so I have the experience with the restaurants. Right now, I'm not working in restaurants. However, my wife will be the chef, and she's going to be managing the store. I'm going to be around to help out. For the menu, it's going to be Mediterranean food, which is like hummus, falafel, tabula, you know, the shawarma, grilled, grilled michiawi, so, you know, just the Mediterranean food.
If I understand, this will be your first restaurant?
In Westmont.
Yeah, and you have another one where?
No, I used to own before.
You used to, so, but this is your, you and your wife are going into, okay.
Thank you.
Any additional? Anybody from the audience? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Addington?
Yes.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Well, congratulations, we look forward to your opening. Thank you. New business B, award of bid proposal, 2016 MFT resurfacing project. Board to consider an ordinance accepting the bid proposal from K-5 Construction Corporation for the village's 2016 MFT resurfacing project, MFT number 15-00108-00-RS, and authorizing a contract consistent with the bid documents. And public works director Ramsey, you've got some additional information for us.
Thank you, Mayor. The village accepted bid proposals from five contractors for the 2016 MFT resurfacing project. The low bidder was K-5 Construction Corporation with a low bid of $2,142,966.86, which was 24.8% under the engineering estimate of $2,848,954, sorry. Staff recommends the award to K-5 bid of $2,142,966.86. This is the completion of the three-year, $8.5 million bond that we took out to do the resurfacing projects that we've been doing for the past little less than three years.
So any extra, we might be able to sneak in a couple other...
Yeah, right, we are a little, we have approximately $2.5 million to spend, and obviously, the bid came in at 2.1, so we are adding, we're working on adding a couple more streets. As manager May mentioned, Norial's out of town this week, so we're going to, once this does get approved tonight, I'll be working with him next week to finalize the streets that we're going to add to that list, and get approval, and then we'll, you know, put it on our website and post it on newspaper.
Very good.
The good news is that the, this great bid result and the great savings that we're seeing here is a direct result of the phenomenon with the fuel prices right now, because asphalt, the tarp, the two-minute part of the asphalt is a petroleum product, so we're reaping that benefit, but we're also at the end of, when we have to spend those bond proceeds, so we're $400,000 short on that investment, and we're looking for opportunities to resurface. And it's not that there's not locations to do, the complication is, is adding it to an existing contract that's regulated by IDOT, because it's a motor fuel tax one, so we have to be careful how we add to it. So it's going to be extensions of existing roads and things like that, so we're, that's the part we're still working on.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve, Barry.
Second, Nero.
Motion made and seconded to approve. On the question.
I would just hope that we make sure and send all of our Taste of Westmont sponsorship information to K-5 and so forth, because we'd love to see their name out there after spending $2 million.
We will definitely do that.
Okay, thank you, Mike.
Actually, that's going to be our policy from now on, anytime, any contractors we deal with, we'll definitely be passing that information along to them from now on.
That'd be great. We'd love to see them at Taste.
I'm aware of it.
Any additional? Any questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Addington?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. New business C, fire department lease agreement, Pierce Velocity 105-foot aerial fire truck. Board to consider an ordinance authorizing a turn-in tax-exempt lease purchase agreement for one Pierce Velocity 105-foot aerial fire truck. Chief Wise.
Thanks, Mayor. Based on the recommendation, the Public Safety Committee and the Westmont Fire Department Truck Committee request in the village to authorize an agreement to a turn-in tax-exempt lease purchase for one Pierce Velocity 105-foot aerial fire truck. The vehicle price is $1,007,800. Performance bond is $3,024, for a total cost of $1,008,24. Because we've been a longstanding customer of Pierce, they're giving us a prepaid discount of $44,000. The net cost of the vehicle is $966,824. Adding in the seven-year warranty of $96,000, amount to be financed is $1,062,824. The seven-year lease is $126,905.26 a year, and that first payment is due one year from signing the paperwork, which will be next Monday. And Spencer, I don't know if you want to add anything or not?
Today, Spencer?
No.
They will.
I just wanted to add that, as the board's probably aware, it's been discussed multiple times, but also for the benefit of the public, this is replacing a ladder truck, which is significantly more expensive than the Quint, which is what we're looking at getting, so we're able to replace it with a cheaper vehicle, which we think is a good thing.
It's expensive.
Less expensive. Quality.
It's true. A high-quality vehicle, less expensive.
Yeah, might not be the word we use with fire trucks.
Yes, a less expensive.
Less expensive.
Do I have a motion?
Motion by Addington to approve.
Second by Little.
Motion made and seconded. On additional questions? Your deputy chief doesn't want to. All right, seeing no questions, roll call, please.
Trustee Addington?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Moving on, new business D, 2016 official zoning map. Board to consider an ordinance approving the revised zoning map of the Village of Westmont dated December 31, 2015, as the official 2016 zoning map. And again, community development director Ziegler.
Thank you. We're presenting the 2016 official zoning map. This incorporates all the changes that we've done in the past year, including any rezonings, annexations, address changes, et cetera. So if approved, then we would pass that all out so that everyone has a new copy, and this is something that we're required to do every year. I'm available for any questions.
Required to do by March 31 of every year, so, but she says if approved.
Just kind of like the prevailing rate of wages, too.
Requirement.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve, Nero.
Second, Guzzo.
Ooh, they just aged you as close. Motion made and seconded. Any additional questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Addington?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. New business E, energy code text amendment. Board to consider an ordinance approving a text amendment to the municipal code regarding the Illinois Energy Code. And we keep community development Ziegler up there at the...
Thank you, Mayor. We recommend amending the municipal code to include language that the state of Illinois requires that now references the 2015 Energy Code rather than 2012 Energy Code. If approved by the village board, the state then issues us a formal approval following adoption. This will include, I read, 1% energy savings with the new 2015 standards. I'm available for any questions.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve, Little.
Second, Barker.
Motion made, second. Any additional comments from anybody who's with the Environmental Commission?
So Jill, how, how does this affect us, I guess?
It is not more strict. We would be following the same things. I heard that this time it's mostly fixing typos and fixing things to make things a little bit more prescriptive for, when you're trying to do energy savings, you can show it on the plans versus having to prove it, I guess. But like I said, it's only a 1% energy savings, so we're not seeing a lot of changes with this one.
So this isn't something that has riders with it, that if somebody's remodeling, all of a sudden, energy code kicks in, and now they're redoing their whole house and things like that? There's no hidden agendas on there?
As far as I've been able to tell, and I've read several articles on it, there don't appear to be any hidden agendas, and it's not more strict than 2012.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Addington?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Motion passes. Moving on, miscellaneous. This opportunity, anybody, any board member have anything they'd like to share or comment on?
I do want to comment on one thing. I forgot to mention that in, don't be sure and check our school district websites, too, because they have a lot of things going on. I mentioned the park district, the library, and us, but also check both Marker School District and Westmont Community District.
Seeing no other items, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, Addington.
Well, that was weak.
Second, Little?
Weakly.
Motion made and second adjourned meeting. Roll call, please.
Trustee Addington?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes. And I'd like to thank everybody for coming tonight, and this meeting is adjourned.